Well, there's another me. Three things going on tonight.
So you have to just think you're all right?
Hell, thanks for the, this is how long it goes.
Pressure's on. All right, it appears to be seven PM, so I'd like to call to order this May fourth, the meeting of the Ferrisburg Planning Commission. And before we do a roll call, I would just like to remind my fellow commissioners that to speak clearly and distinctly loudly into the microphone. So that the folks out in the net there will be able to hear what you have to say. So could we have a roll call, please?
Chairman rifle?
Present.
Commissioner Jonas?
Present.
Commissioner Schubert?
Present.
Commissioner Weber? Commissioner Tuggle? Commissioner Hawley?
Here.
Commissioner Carlson?
Here.
Chairman, I move to excuse Commissioner Tuggle.
Grant the permission and excuse for Commissioner Tuggle who had another commitment. All in favor, please say aye.
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 He's out of town on business.
Yes, that's the issue. Okay, consideration for approval, May fourth agenda. Craig has prepared an agenda, and as I looked over it, a couple of issues before we approve it here. I would note that item number ten is the same as item number eight, so somehow I think it got printed twice. And so I think maybe we should delete item ten. And, um, and Craig told me before the meeting, um, on item sixteen, uh, the one about a fill permit, uh, the applicant has asked us to put it on hold. So Craig says we need to actually just table that item. And I think we need, when we, whoever moves to accept the agenda, uh, should delete, uh, number, um, ten. And then move the other numbers forward by one.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Item eight and nine are the same as ten and eleven.
I think.
I'm sorry.
Items eight and nine are the same as ten and eleven.
Yes. I said eight and ten.
Eight and nine are the same as ten and eleven.
Um, no, I don't think so.
Nine starts with public hearing.
Eight and nine relate to the rezoning and, um, um, I'm sorry, seven and eight relate to the rezoning. And then, uh, eight and nine relate to the definitions and so forth. As I read it.
None of them.
You're saying that eight is the same as nine?
No, eight is the same as ten, and so ten is not needed.
Right. What was he saying about nine?
Eight discusses the public hearing, but I don't know that ten discusses anything about a public hearing.
Was removed from the table. First one removed from the table, and that first one, we already had a public hearing on, so we don't need to have a public hearing on that. But we do need to discuss whether we're going to recommend the zoning change. Is everyone sufficiently confused, or do I have to try harder?
Shorten the meeting by half an hour.
Well, I think so, yes. And we won't have to repeat ourselves, yes. So would anyone like to, um, propose, uh, accepting the agenda as prepared with that deletion of what's listed here as number ten? Well, um, oh, can we table it right in this motion here? Okay, we can. Again, this is not a, if we're tabling something that's not a debatable issue, but I don't think we're going to debate it anyway. Uh, so, um, is there a second for that motion? It's been moved in second. We, uh, accept the agenda as prepared with the exception that we delete item ten. And we also, uh, table item sixteen. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions? We've done it. Wonderful. Okay, um, consideration for approval, the May sixth, two thousand twenty-three meeting minutes is printed?
April.
I'm sorry. The April sixth, two thousand twenty-three minutes. Craig has dutifully prepared them. He's done his great job as usual. Um, any additions, corrections, or changes to those minutes? If not, Chair will entertain a motion to accept them as prepared.
So moved.
Second? It's been moved in second. We approve the April sixth minutes as prepared. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? We've accepted it. Wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, now we're down to, um, item number five, um, public comments. It's traditional in Ferrisburg Planning Commission meetings to give members of the public a chance to share any thoughts they might have with us. Uh, both early in the meeting at this point and also late in the meeting. Um, if you have comments you want to share about something that will be on a public hearing later in the meeting. I would ask that you refrain your comments and hold them till the public hearing. But anything else you'd like to share with us, I'd invite you to come to the podium, state your name and your address, and keep your comments maybe to no more than three minutes. Yes?
Please, Lawrence, one seven seven zero zero Navajo. Um, I have a, uh, comment on, uh, seventeen applications for, for the Plan Commission. Jake Shirley has been waiting for a year for a vote from the City Council, and Mayor Belize has not scrotted up for a vote. You guys all volunteer your time, and you guys do great work, and this is a great committee. I truly believe that Jake is to be voted on at City Council because we can't do any of this again. And you guys unanimously picked him almost a year ago, and I, I, I just... Politics is, you know, I, I, I just don't understand. You guys volunteer your time, and I hope Sandy and Jordan get your other approval to go on. You guys got a good group of people, and I know Roger wants to retire. Oh, you don't? Well, we love having you, and you've, you've been wonderful for this, for this community for really long time. Long as I've been here, and that's almost thirty years, so, and you've been here before that, but I, I just, you know, Jake has done some wonderful things. He's a, a wonderful guy, and, and I just, I, I, I don't understand. You guys unanimously did it, and not to bring him up for a vote. I, I find, you know, this is, is an election year, and it'll be interesting, and I, I just think, you know, he deserves a shot. He's got the qualifications, and I think he would be a great addition, and, uh, I, I, I say you guys hold your ground. I mean, you guys unanimously did it. I mean, what, what's the point? You're just going to keep doing this over and over again, as I hope you do the same thing. So, um, I think Sandy and Jordan are, are, are both doing a wonderful job up here, and I think they should be, you know, reappointed. But I think Jake deserves at least a vote from City Council, and I can't believe that we're still here. Thank you.
Yeah, Jim Bremer. Um, I've got a question. I'm not sure whether I'm supposed to run it up now or not, but you say you don't want any talk on the rezoning of the land? Now until after you guys voted in?
We had the public hearing last meeting.
Right, and I was here.
You were, yes, and you shared some thoughts with us.
But now, I don't recall being at that last meeting about light industrial zoning, which is now written all over this stuff. But before you vote on, I gotta have a question on that. Well, it's on the end of ten. It's on the end of eleven. It's on the end of nine. It's on the end of eight.
That, that relates, those items relate to some definitions that we're gonna, some text change and additions we're gonna put in. We're proposing to put in the zoning ordinance. It doesn't relate, um, well, it does relate in some sense, makes it possible for someone who has general commercial property to, uh, have a, a unit on there, units on there that have, well, some residential and some, uh, uh, storage units.
That's my other question.
Yes.
The, the residential areas on there, that they can live in there, they can do light industry in there, and you guys are gonna vote on changing this now next to a residential area? Before you change the zoning, and then you're gonna change the zoning after you vote? I don't know if you're gonna vote yes or no, but if you vote yes, then this guy can come in here and do whatever he wants to, of like, you know, however you change it on the, the rezoning.
Our, uh, we are responding to a request from a developer who had an idea for how to use that property, which has been vacant forever. Uh, and, um, it sits adjacent to land that is owned, uh, uh...
Residential.
It is currently, uh, residential, but it's right next to commercial property.
There's a creek in between. That's what the last zoning board said. That was a good natural barrier. And so that's what I say, you're, you're fixing this up for the guy to get in there and do what he wants to? Basically like the dirt that was hauled in there and everything, all on their own? Are you giving them that land just for whatever they want to do with it? Is this what you're saying? Okay, and the other question I have, did you ever, any of you ever see where that land was advertised as residential? They couldn't sell it as residential? Was it never signed up there? It was all listed as commercial, right on the corner of Van Wagner.
Um, there's a zoning map, and there's also a future land use plan, both of them, the, um, zoning map has it as commercial. Um, the, uh, but the property you're concerned about is listed there as residential. Um, uh, and, uh, the, um, and that's the way it also is on the future land use plan.
Oh, so that's all been changed already?
No, no, it isn't. Hasn't been changed.
Because it's quite a bit of confusion to me, anyway.
Well, the...
To me, like, you've already voted yes, and you've already are fixing it up for this guy to go in there, put buildings in there, have people live in there, and they can do light industrial work in there, like the iron ones in Grand Haven. Across from the football field or the old high school. Where they're working in there, doing, doing, uh, commercial, or industrial, commercial, whatever they're doing in there.
It would be, uh, an area that we would have, uh, an opportunity to oversee with a site plan before they would do anything in there. And so, uh, that isn't a place where you, you were envisioning it, where it would be, uh, uh, commercial in the sense that they'd have a factory or something in there.
Wouldn't have to be a factory. If they can, if they can do light industrial in there, they could be in there with staple guns all night long. Stapling stuff. That's not heavy, heavy industrial. They could be making furniture in there or anything else, using nail guns and so.
Going to be a use that would generate, uh, uh, off-site, uh, light, uh, off-site noise and so forth. It wouldn't fly.
They wouldn't get the permit?
They wouldn't get the permit.
They would already have it?
No, they don't. No, and we have, that has to come before us to approve.
Okay. Just rather confusing the way you, you have a planning meeting on Monday, and then it's changed, now only on paper, while letting people know.
Actually, if you look at the agenda of the previous meeting, that was in there as well.
Not, not light, uh, not light industrial that I'm aware of.
I think it was.
For light industrial.
We haven't, we haven't added anything to it.
See, I never heard that word even said. It was commercial.
Yeah, and that, that relates to other places in the city where there's light industrial. We're not making this light industrial.
Okay, well, that's what I'm getting out of this.
Yeah, well, it's, you, you're conflating two things that are a little different.
Well, the glowing wasn't, because the glowing, it sounds like you possibly could let them in there and people live in there and so.
No, the light industrial will not be, is not what's being asked for for that property. General commercial is what's being asked for it. Same type of zoning that is the property to the north.
In other words, okay. Thank you.
Absolutely, yes.
I own the house next to where he's talking about in Grand Haven, where they, the condos at eight sixteen Waverly Street. I'm my girlfriend's daughter, and then they built the condo things over there, and, um, some of them are livable, that, that will be able to be, have living space in there, and they're doing basically the same thing. They can have, I think there's, I think there's eight units in the one, the two buildings, and then they're just building the other ones right now that are supposed to have type of living, because we were, we couldn't figure out, because I was just looking at it today, which is really funny that he said that. The way that they're, they're made, there would be no way like to put a boat in. I'm like, what are they doing there? Trying to figure it out. So we went over and asked them, and they're actually putting sliding glass doors in there and having a little porch area out there for the living space. But they have to do like an arborvitae, because the old house that I owned is like right on top of them. I mean, they're like from, you guys away. And that's how close they are. And so they have to, it is gonna be something like that, that you guys are gonna require having some kind of space between, if it is residential like ours is, because it's the same type. I, I, I'm not exactly sure the piece of property you're talking about, but if, if there's a house right there, I mean, because our house is a two-family house. Right on, I mean, they're like in each other's yard.
I think the developer's proposing something that will be storage units, and there will be several units that would have the option to have just storage and a residential component.
Right, because that's what this is too. There's some that are just storage, and then there's some that are both. But, but, um, and it is in a commercial residential. It's right on the tracks. There's a factory behind and more stuff down, so it is a mixed-use area. But, so I just wondered, you know...
Name again and...
Pete DeBernie, one eight seven two six hundred and seventy-four. I think last, last meeting, we, I, we brought up the, uh, issue of wetlands. Has anybody did any research on that?
The plan is some wetland.
While there's currently on the south side of the creek, there's four acres of wetland.
I think it's going, there's gonna have to be some use.
Is that gonna happen before you approve, or just, how does that work? And back to what you guys were just talking about a few minutes ago on, uh, under number nine, it does say to allow accessory dwelling units. Now, is that what they're referring to, where you can live in it and work in it as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
But, uh, the, um, the unit would have to have same utility, two utility services, have the same building, and so.
I believe last month, you guys said it's just gonna be storing lots. Now we're talking bringing water and sewer and everything else. And, well, the dwelling, are they gonna put sewers and stuff?
They would have to, yes, yes.
It was never store-in-locked, like the normal thing, with, uh, a bunch of garages hooked together. Nothing like that, no.
All right, thanks.
Hi, I'm Tara DeBernie, I'm one seven eight six hundred and seventy-four. So now you're talking dwellings and storage locks, so people will be in and out of there all hours of the night then, is what you're saying? Because the last meeting, you were talking about security issues and it only being open, like, is this gonna be monitored at all? Like, the car wash by Leffing, so it's open all night long now with the in-and-out traffic and the doors never being shut? Are you gonna monitor the new store-in-locks, like you monitor that area that was supposed to not affect the residents in the area?
Developer's planning to do that.
Doesn't plan on doing what?
Uh, have a monitoring of...
So nobody's gonna monitor it? So I'm gonna have lights shining on my house?
No, you won't.
Day and night?
No, that won't be allowed. Lighting has to be down lighting, not going off-site. That's a requirement that we would, we would impose on, on the developer. And, um, let's move to agenda item number six, uh, and this, um, relates to the zoning issue, which we tabled at the last meeting after we had the public hearing. And, um, uh, to discuss it, someone will have to move that we take it off the table and bring it up for discussion. Um, so, um, Chair will entertain a motion to untable, um, this item. Is there a second?
Second.
We moved in second, and if we untable, uh, the issue about rezoning, uh, and, uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Okay, it passes, so it's taken off the table. We're up for discussion. We're down now to item number seven, which is discussion and to take action if appropriate to recommend the City Council to amend, not amend, the City Code, Chapter one five four, zoning, Article nine, districts and district standards, to rezone from RG two, medium-density residential to GC, general commercial, a part of parcel number seventy oh three oh nine three hundred oh three nine, commonly known as vacant land. The area to be rezoned is four acres more or less. So, we, those of us who were here at the meeting last month, uh, heard the public discussion. Um, Commissioner Carlson and I walked the property. I don't know if anyone else did. Um, but, uh, we're open now to discuss, uh, the zoning proposal.
I was, uh, I was on the, I did it by YouTube, so I did the, the actual streaming of it and watched the meeting, so I cut them up to date on what's going on there. Plus, this goes way back to years ago when we first looked at that property. It was all RG two, right up, right up to Van Wagner. And then we had the Trillium go in, we had the Office Park go in, and all of a sudden, the zoning started changing there, because those were, uh, things that were, uh, proposed for development. So we, at that time, decided to go all the way over to hundred and seventy-fourth with the general commercial. And that's what you see on the zoning map now, but the idea that, uh, first of all, zoning does not drive development. Uh, development does drive zoning, though, and we can't preclude, we can't envision exactly what the city's going to look like, but it gradually moves. In this case, it's a parcel adjacent to general commercial. Therefore, it makes sense, and also this, we, we, we'll potentially, we get to it, might, might allow residential is also next to residential. But it's got a lot of restrictions. I want to put that, make that very clear, a lot of restrictions. And, um, Mr. Camps has a lot of experience in the city of Ferrisburg with other projects, so we know what to expect. And also, there's a long way to go before anything's approved on this, so just wanted to let you know this is one thing that tends to move us along. Because we're looking at that corner has been vacant for so long. We wanted something around there and couldn't envision exactly what it would be until we got this reported.
We're there, yes, uh, so the developer will have to deal with it.
Have to make sure they do develop, a, a developer does deal with it appropriately?
One of the issues that Ferrisburg has been dealing with for a long time is we'd like to see a little bit more economic development in the city. And, um, this is an opportunity to take advantage, uh, of a slight change, uh, with a developer that we have a lot of experience with, who's done a good and very responsible job with his projects in Ferrisburg. So that's why we have some confidence that he'll do, do a good job, and of course, he, he, he won't be able to, uh, um, do something without our approval.
I guess I just want to say, like, I understand, um, the residents' concern about wetlands, and I, I do think that would be something to look into. Um, but after speaking with the developer at last, the last meetings and seeing his projects in the city, um, I do think it's still something that I think would do, fit well in that area. Um, so I think as long as we take the right path and get everything figured out and, um, they, you know, get everything checked out.
Uh, David, could you do a quick, uh, review of exactly what happens with wetlands and how the city's involved and what, where the city is not involved?
The wetland issue is going to, if there are wetlands to windate in the site and they're, are to be impacted, they have to go through a permitting process through Eagle. Uh, so it, it's not a, a city, uh, permit process, but we ensure that that's handled, uh, and permitted prior to any sort of building permits or, or development application. So, so all outside agency permits need to be in hand, um, as well as department head approvals, uh, prior to building permitting and site development.
Thank you.
So that, that is secondary. If, if this property were to be rezoned and the zoning text were to be changed to allow the use, um, there would be a, a later special land use and site plan review process that would also require a public hearing, a site plan, public comments, and, uh, uh, we would work through the township's development requirements at that time. And at that time, we would know whether or not there are delineated wetlands on that site. And at that time, we would know whether or not there are delineated wetlands on that site.
My thoughts are, it's on a major thoroughfare. It's adjoining to, to, um, other business commercial property. And yes, John, you and I did walk the property. Uh, in the springtime, it certainly has got quite the creek running through it. I'm sure it's not that way in the summer and the fall, but it probably is wet and might even be flowing. I would akin it to a small river right now. Yeah.
Sounds like that's something they feel before.
This idea was brought to us, I think we were all very excited about it and thought that it was a great idea, and I do hear the residents' concerns. It's, I think that's why it's tough because it's, we would love some development, but we're also listening to your concerns too, and, yeah.
Able to, uh, the motion to discuss it at the last meeting because of the citizens' concern. So we heard you, we wanted to go out and see what it was looking like, so that's why Commissioner Carlson and I did walk the property.
Chairman?
Yes.
Um, I had a problem because I really believe in supporting people, not, that's what we're here for, to develop the city for the people. However, you have to look at the greater good. We've been trying to get this property developed for a very long time. And, um, while I feel saddened that people are upset about it, I think you have to look at what it's gonna bring to the city. We were excited about it, we had no problem with it at all, and we've worked with the gentleman before. So it's not like we're taking some five-a-night guy that we don't have any trust in, so I would have to support it.
Point where anyone would like to make a motion of any kind here? I would move that, uh, we recommend the city council to amend city code, uh, chapter one-five-four zoning, article nine, districts, district standards, to rezone from RG, minimum-density residential, to general commercial, GC, a part, parcel number seven-zero-zero-three-zero-nine-three-zero-zero-three-nine, commonly known as vacant land. Area to be rezoned is four acres more or less, and that means it's close, it's close there, anyway. Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Schubert? Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Commissioner Holly? Commissioner Carlson?
Yes.
Chairman Riffle?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item eight, and this is a discussion. And to take action if appropriate to remove from the table a public hearing to consider an ordinance to amend city code by amending chapter one-five-four zoning, to amend section two-two-twenty, uh, and to include the definitions of personal and commercial storage site suites and self-storage facility, to amend section four-eighty, to include special land use specific standards for personal and commercial storage suites and self-storage facilities, to amend section nine-point-one-ten, to allow accessory dwelling units, personal and commercial storage suites and self-storage facilities as special land uses in the GC, general commercial zoning district, and to amend section nine-one-twenty, to allow self-storage facilities and personal and commercial storage suites as special land uses in the light industrial LI-one zoning district. Would anyone move to, uh, uh, untable this discussion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, we vote to, uh, untable this issue. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, extensions? Okay, it passes, so we've done that. And now, we are gonna have a public hearing on this issue. Public hearing to consider an ordinance to amend city code by amending section, by amending chapter one-five-four zoning, to amend section two-twenty to include the definitions of personal and commercial storage suites and self-storage facility, to amend section four-eighty, include special land use specific standards for personal and commercial storage suites and self-storage facilities, to amend section nine-one-ten, to allow accessory dwelling units, personal and commercial storage suites and self-storage facilities as special land uses in the GC, commercial, uh, general commercial zoning district, and to amend section nine-one-twenty, to allow self, self-storage facilities and personal and commercial storage suites as special land uses in the light industrial LI-one zoning district. Okay, there are a number of things going on here, uh, and, um, uh, the developer has a proposal, uh, that he has shared with us that requires some of these definitions. Uh, and, um, also, it's a little cleanup on the, on our zoning ordinance to take place here. Um, and, um, I think, um, I'll ask our consultant here, David, to, uh, to talk about this, and then, like, anyone who wants to share thoughts with us about it, come ahead and do it. David, please.
Chairman, I thought I could give a little bit of history first, just to preface the, uh, the need for the zoning text amendment. Um, when the planning commission reviewed the original channel-side developments, uh, it was processed under the, the LI-one zoning district as a special land use. Um, within that section of the zoning ordinance, it does not specifically say self-storage facility or, or even the kind of the personal storage or contractor suite. Uh, it simply says warehousing and storage. So, uh, when we reviewed that, we, we used that terminology, that term under LI-one as a similar use to what was proposed, and that's, so that's how that went through. Uh, at that time, I had, I had mentioned that what was proposed for channel-side was a, a bit beyond the traditional self-storage model, uh, with contractor suites, and then it evolved into a situation where they were requesting dwelling units. Uh, so, uh, at that time, then, a few months later, uh, the zoning ordinance was amended to include accessory dwellings for those storage suites, personal storage facilities. So, we were working with the ordinance that, that was mainly, um, anticipating more of a, a traditional self-storage model where, where this idea has kind of evolved to something more that, that Mr. Camps has proposed over the last, um, couple of meetings. Uh, so, the reason that, that this ordinance addresses a couple of different sections of the zoning ordinance is because, uh, first, I wanted to include, uh, two new definitions, uh, personal and commercial storage suites. So that's, that's the term, the definition that we did not have when we reviewed the original channel-side proposal. So, uh, the definition i- is, I think, more reflective of, of what, uh, channel-side is. Uh, so it, it's, um, you know, personal storage suites where, where you could have your own personal storage, your place to, uh, kind of a man cave in a way. Uh, you could have a contractor that uses it for storage and for staging before they go out on the job site, uh, or storage your boat or RV. Uh, and then we have another definition that was needed, uh, just the, the self-storage facility. So that, that's defined as really the traditional self-storage model that, that you would typically see. So we wanted to include those two definitions in the zoning ordinance. We go on then to the, the section two of the ordinance, which includes, uh, specific use requirements um, that are directly related to those two terms. So, uh, we have personal, commercial storage suites, um, so we have a parking requirement. Uh, during the original channel-side reviews, I, I had mentioned that I was concerned with parking because, uh, typically in a traditional model, you would have a, a one space in front of a unit, and that's enough to unload your things and, and move on. But when it's used for more than just storage, if it's used, typically you go there, you know, once a month or a couple of times a year, but if you're using it every week or, or more often, um, we wanted to ensure that there's adequate parking for that, you know, business use or for personal use of it rather than just traditional self-storage. So, uh, under section two S, personal and commercial storage suites, we have a parking requirement that's, uh, two spaces per personal storage suite. Uh, so that's beyond what we would require for typical self-storage. And then S-two i- is, I think, something that would address a comment, uh, from, from earlier about being able to do any, any sort of industrial use within a, a, one of these units. Um, the reason that S-two is important is that, um, wherever they're allowed, whether it's the industrial districts or general commercial, you cannot do anything in that storage unit that's not permitted within that zoning district. So, in, in general commercial, if, if this ordinance was to pass and someone were to develop a, a, a commercial storage suite, uh, someone could not carry out an industrial operation in their suite in general commercial. So, uh, S-two is important because it's not allowing for any other commercial or industrial uses that are not allowed in general commercial. And same with light industrial, um, the same thing, if, if there's a use that wasn't permitted, you know, for instance, retail. Um, so in channel-side, they couldn't, someone couldn't sell stuff out of a personal or commercial storage suite. So I think that's important to note, uh, why that was, that was written, and that, that might satisfy some concern. So, uh, that's S-one and two are the requirements for the, the, the storage suites. Uh, then, uh, we have a specific use requirement for self-storage facility. Uh, so, uh, there's not much to that except for I put in a parking requirement, uh, one parking space for twenty, per twenty units. Um, I actually, after, after reading this after the last meeting, uh, that I didn't attend, um, I don't actually think the first sentence is necessary because although we don't have the term mini warehouse in the zoning ordinance, it is hidden in the parking requirements. There, there's a parking requirement for self-storage, even though we don't reference it anywhere in the ordinance. So, um, now that I found that, I, I would say, uh, that one per twenty storage units requirement is not necessary because we do have a part, a parking requirement. Uh, but I would keep the second part, parking may be reduced or deferred if the applicant demonstrates that it's not necessary based on anticipated use. Uh, I review a lot of self-storage facilities and parking, uh, having a parking requirement for them is, is typically excessive. So I would include having that, that, that flexibility so that if someone, uh, offered a traditional self-storage model and they felt that the parking was excessive and it wasn't gonna serve any use, it would just be extra pavement, it would give the planning commission the ability to waive that requirement or reduce it, or have it deferred so that if it became a problem, they would have to install it later. So, um, at the bottom of page one of the ordinance, I would just strike the first part of T-one. Um, and then we go on then, on page two, uh, there's a, a number of other requirements and restrictions for self-storage, and especially outdoor storage as well. So, I wanted to ensure that, uh, any place where there's self-storage, uh, that there were, you know, no other activities going on in those units. Um, if they were, if there's outdoor storage, that it's properly screened and subject to setbacks. Um, and, uh, but by a, a six-foot privacy fence, so if there are RVs or boats or anything outside, um, I would recommend a, a screening requirement. Um, then the next section, three of this proposed ordinance, uh, i- is, uh, simply allowing, uh, accessory dwelling units, personal storage and commercial storage suites and self-storage facilities as special land uses in the general commercial zoning district. Uh, so, currently, none of those are allowed in, in general commercial, so this zoning text amendment would allow those three uses within general commercial. Then section four of the ordinance, um, specifically allows self-storage facilities and personal and storage, personal and commercial storage suites in, uh, LI-one, LI-two, and LI-three. So, as I mentioned before, uh, those uses are not specifically referenced, it, we just have a general warehousing, uh, line item. Uh, now, this would, would include those specific terms a- as special land uses within those districts. Um, and then, we wouldn't have to reference the accessory dwelling unit because those are, those are already permitted and, and the zoning ordinance already allows that in, in the industrial district. So, um, it is a bit complicated because we are doing more than just addressing the general commercial, um, site where, where the desire is the storage suites, um, and the accessory dwelling unit. Uh, we, we are doing some other cleanups, as you mentioned.
Is a little confusing, and, uh, knowing what's happening here is something more encompassing and broad than simply what's in the previous rezone issue.
Uh, one point I, I wanted to make too, um, as I was reading this since the last meeting and, and thinking about the, uh, concerns, um, I would also recommend that the, um, in section two, uh, that's, there are setbacks in the general commercial zoning district, uh, that are greater than that would be required for, for other uses. So, um, if you look at the table for, for setbacks in general commercial, uh, side setbacks can be as, as, uh, narrow as seven feet for general commercial. So, whereas in the industrial zoning districts, it's twenty-five feet side and rear. So, I would suggest that if, if you're allowing for this type of facility in general commercial, uh, you would add on, you should consider adding a, an increased setback for side and rear up to twenty-five feet, so it'd be consistent with the industrial setback. And that setback could be listed in this section two S and T for both uses. So I think that might, might be a worthwhile add-on to this ordinance. Sure, so, so the, the concept, we are, we are adding this new use to general commercial. So, in, in industrial, where you can do it in industrial, it's subject to twenty-five-foot rear and side setbacks. If you were to do this in commercial, we fall back on the general commercial setbacks, uh, which are as, as narrow as seven feet, uh, be, because that, that's just the, the, the general commercial setback. So, what I would suggest is that we apply a twenty-five-foot setback to these two uses when developed in general commercial. So, so it, it would be stricter than, than the, the base district, and only applicable to those two uses. Um, I, I would put it's under, uh, uh, so on, on page one, section two, uh, I would put it as, as S-three, and then, T-six, so you, you would, uh, this section is, there, it's the specific use requirements for these two land uses. So I, I would simply make the statement, uh, side and rear setbacks shall be no less than twenty-five feet, and then add that as the final requirement for both of those uses.
That's specific to this property or for all general commercial?
All, uh, personal and commercial storage suites and self-storage facilities within general commercial.
Okay.
So essentially, it, it would be developed similar to industrial then. You wouldn't be able to have a reduced setback because we're really considering the use, this type of facility, and, and we wanna make sure that it's, it's more sensitive to neighboring property.
The side and rear setbacks at least?
Twenty-five feet, which would be consistent with the industrial setback. Separation between individual buildings would be based on fire code.
Interesting that the, the other general commercial areas that are zoned in the city are the, going back to Trillium and the Office Park next to that, Lippings property, and also, uh, where I move is the old bowling alley. Uh, there's, there's no other, um, general commercial area, so, and I don't recall any of those being, uh, eight-foot, just several eight-foot setbacks. I think there are more, just by nature of, uh, the type of business and everything, so putting it in there is not a, not a burden to anybody. So, putting it in there is not a burden to anybody. This is a, anyone in the audience wants to ask questions or share something with us, this is your chance to do it. But obviously, we're a little challenged here. We're thinking things through and making a couple of changes as we go along here. So, if you don't understand it fully, I empathize with you, but you can certainly ask questions about what we're doing here and what we're proposing and give us feedback. We invite it. It's a public hearing. Okay, we got one time.
Todd Camps, 17472 West Spring Lake Road. Thanks for the comments. Just on the setback, the comment, I would just keep in mind, depending on, just in general comments as properties are developed, you put a mandate on it, it does limit when you look at both property sides, you just took 50 feet away. So, just seems maybe extensive to go from seven to 25. Maybe there's compromise. Maybe that's looked at with the site plan and based on the type of use, might be a good time to address that versus just mandating it would be my thought.
Seven feet setbacks?
No, we were thinking of going more than that, yeah. And, you know, again, you know, leaving buffers are important. We believe in that. You know, we're not coming in and clear-cutting right to a property edge. Lighting has been addressed. You know, as we've laid out, the buildings to the south would not even have any lighting on the back of them. So, the first eight-unit building, the doors face north, the lights would be to the north, the driveways to the north. So, everything to the south that would abut the residential is, I mean, there's not going to be a lot of light pollution, noise pollution. If someone pulls into their unit, their lights at night, the lights are going to face the building, not the property. So, I think from a, you know, we've taken into account, you know, I think the best way to lay that out. The comment on wetlands, I think David talked about, that has to be studied. We have to follow Eagle guidelines. So, whatever they dictate is what we need to do. So, we'll work through that process. As we talked about in the previous meetings, we're under contract. We have to finalize the due diligence and absolutely to the north where the creek is, there's going to be some wetland area. We've already planned to stay away from that. There's a pond there. We've already talked to our engineers about using that for the retention. So, we don't plan to impact that area at all. And we've got to make some modifications of course of the site plan, we would do that. That's the stuff we would all, you know, come back with also to you, you know, once, you know, if you choose to approve it. As I think Craig mentioned, we've got to then develop a final site plan and then come in for that use.
He just talking about, is this the developer here? Is this up? Oh, okay. When he talks about wetlands and so, this was brought before Ferrisburg City Council, before the city manager on different occasions. They've already filled a bunch of stuff in back there. They've already created a pond over on my side of the property, on the south side of the property. They dug that so-called pond there out of that creek on previous owners that had it. That big lake that's in there, they were in there with a crane digging that. I ended up calling the DNR. The DNR kicked, what's his name, Al Russ, whatever it is, from Michigan water and land use. And I never saw him back in there again. So, it sounds to me like you're still having, the builder has to address all this stuff. So, you're not addressing that whole area as far as what's been done there already? You're just going to approve it and then let them figure it out? Well, it was just before the last meeting when the planks was hauling all kinds of dirt in there.
About this four, approximately four-acre parcel? Or you're talking the parcel to the north?
The parcel to the north, which is all part of the same creek. And that's why I brought it up about contaminated dirt. If you walk the property that you're talking about, you see like the piles where they dumped stuff in there from dump trucks, you'll see that some of those mounds are smooth, some of those got all kinds of weeds growing out. We don't even know what that stuff is. And they dumped all that stuff over the hill in the back and then they went in there with a dozer and moved it all around. No, that's not what you're talking about here right now, but you're having him address the wetlands instead of the city? They don't have anything to do with the wetlands? I was told last meeting, that's up to the property owner.
There's stuff that can be brought into a property without a permit. And so, I don't know. Craig, do you know what happened on this property off Van Wagner?
No, I've been contacted with the owner, tried to get information, haven't received it yet.
See, I was in contact with him back when they started dumping it in there because they dumped all it in there. He told me that at that time, this particular area, all that dirt that went in there, they were going to store it there. Next thing I know, they're in there with a dozer and they're pushing that all around. So, I mean, since day one, when they started dumping stuff in there, city Ferrisburg was aware of it.
This has nothing to do with the developer that we're speaking with tonight, right?
I'm still wondering about the wetlands and so, you guys are going to leave it up to the developer?
Well, Eagle, I mean, they're the experts.
Okay, but the last meeting I was at, I was basically told, the one, they got a permit back in 2016, which is a few years ago. And the other was, is it's up to the developer? And that's what I'm wondering, the city has no, you don't look over this stuff or anything, right?
We do, when they submit a site plan, correct? Then we have that opportunity to look at what they're doing with the wetland.
Okay, what they're doing but not what's been done already.
No, it's when before the site plan.
There's still a lot of steps that Mr. Camps would have to follow before this took off. Yeah, there's.
So, in other words, everything that's there, that's what you're going to base it on now. Everything that's sitting there right now, all that dirt and everything that's in there, whether it's contaminated or whatever. Like I said, this creek flows into Smith's Mile, which flows into Spring Lake, just flows into Grand River, which flows into Lake Michigan, and our water comes from out there that we drink.
But just so we're clear, you're talking now about material that was deposited on the property right off of Van Wagner, right?
Off, that's the recent one. That's the ones that the planks were just dumping all that dirt in there. I'm talking about in the back of this property, you guys are talking about, all that stuff that was dumped in there.
When was that dumped?
That was dumped, maybe Craig remembers, I was down there. You don't recall me being here, I didn't think you.
I recall you being, I don't know what day it was.
Well, I don't know what day it was either, yeah.
And was it like this year or we're talking 10 years ago?
No, you're talking years back.
Years back, okay.
So, just out of curiosity, I was wondering, who was in charge of that?
Well, whoever was bringing stuff in needed to have a permit to bring it in and perhaps they didn't have the permit.
So, let's hypothetically, you let this go. Who is in charge of what can go in that farmland as far as business size?
Only items that are allowed in the general commercial district.
Okay, so do they need to come to the city of Ferrisburg and get a permit to, or they can, they just call Mr. Camps or whoever and say, I need a storage facility? Okay, this is how much it is a month.
Get that, Craig.
So, what's being stored in the storage, the city's not going to be involved in what's inside the building. If there's going to be a business or something in there, ask over to the planning commission.
Okay, so I can't just run a storage facility and have a pot operation? And, but it's okay if I get a storage unit and have a man cave and have all my buddies over until 2 o'clock in the morning playing music?
Could be some regulations on noise and music, if there'd be a violation of city code, could be.
Okay, and my other thing is, can I throw up a proposal that they put up some sort of privacy fence along my side there so we don't have to deal with any excess garbage or people walking onto our property?
What to us will be a site plan that we will have to review. And if there's concerns about shielding, we would have to address it at that time. But as I've already shared, light can't be going over onto your property. If there's garbage, yeah, I understand that, yeah.
What I'm saying, you know, I'm almost 100% sure you wouldn't want this next door to your house, would you?
Well, I don't know.
You don't know? You're, you know.
I haven't seen the property yet. I haven't seen the proposal.
You just said you were on the property, so you know what it looks like.
Oh, I saw the property, yes, yeah.
And I know you wouldn't want it next door to your house. Neither would any of you council people want it next to your house. So, I'm just proposing, there's a blockage there of something between my property and these proposed buildings.
Are you the first house down from this parcel?
I'm right next door to this parcel.
To the south?
Yes.
You're the first house to the south?
On the white farmhouse there on the south, yes.
Hey, I don't think Mr. Camp is going to go out of his way to annoy people. I'm sure he would consider that and say, you know, we'll do what we can to keep the trash out of your yard. It's the same thing with people near Lippings, say there's trash in their yard too.
I do have trash, trash my yard from Lippings. I do. And Mr. Camps isn't going to be there.
He's not going to be there, but if you want a privacy fence, I'm sure he'd consider that. He wants to be part of this community and he has been part of the community in a positive way.
I've been here since the day I was born. So, yes, I have been a part of this community for a very long time.
I know how she feels, but I have a house in Grand Haven. Has anybody heard of Berserk Brewery? I own the house right next door. So, it used to be a hardware store open from 9 to 5. So, can you imagine what a brewery would do? And I've owned the house for almost 30 years and you can't stop progress. And I understand that. Like I said, I own the house next to storage units that are going up exactly the same way. I mean, so, I'm just saying, I've gone up, I asked for Arborbiotic to go up, they put them up there, so the land's going to just stay empty. I mean, there's got to be a happy medium there for the people that own the other property. I mean, they can't, I mean, I understand that. I mean, like I said, I've been there twice, you know, and I know how difficult it is. It does affect your property values. Affects my tenants, I have four tenants that live in the building, so I try to protect their needs. I keep their rent low, there's nobody else in Grand Haven that has rents as low as I have them. I'm just saying, there has to be a happy medium and you can't just leave vacant land empty. So, I feel for them, I understand, but there's, you know, there's got to be, the wetlands have to be addressed. I don't know if they can be mitigated to other places. I mean, look what we dealt with, with Woodland Ridge. I did live there. We have, you know, Heather, traffic going down the street, 65 miles an hour. There's a barricade at the end of it. We didn't see it coming until after it was up. Happens all the time and yes, you need to address for it, but I think there can be a happy medium if everybody works together. I just, I understand both sides of it.
At the last meeting, we heard very clearly, I think, from the neighbors who expressed concerns about light, about noise. Tabled it at that point. And now, we've brought it up and voted to make the rezone, but I think all of us up here have heard the concerns of the neighbors about spillover to their properties. Mr. Camps is here tonight, he hears it too. So, I think when, assuming he gets the permits he needs, when he comes here, I suspect he'll be proactive on this case and will do something in his plan to help the neighbors and make sure that your concerns that have been very clearly, actually quite eloquently expressed, especially at the last meeting, but also tonight, to prevent that from happening, is my guess. And of course, the safeguard is, it has to go past us. So, if it looks like it doesn't have adequate safeguards, we'll do something to make it happen. Anyone else in the public hearing like to share anything with us? Okay, not seeing anyone, we're going to close this public hearing at 8:05. And now, let's move to item number 11, previous 11, I guess we'd eliminate number 10, but this is on the original agenda, number 11. And this is for us to discuss and take action, if appropriate, to recommend the city council to amend, not amend, the city code, Chapter 154 zoning, to amend Section 220 to include the definitions of personal and commercial storage suites and self-storage facility, to amend Section 480 to include special land use, specific standards for personal and commercial storage suites and self-storage facilities, to amend Section 9110 to allow accessory dwelling units, personal and commercial storage suites and self-storage facilities as special land uses in the GC, general commercial zoning district, and to amend Section 9120 to allow self-storage facilities and personal and commercial storage suites as special land uses in the light industrial LI1 zoning district. Commissioners, we've heard a lot of thoughts here and David prepared some good language here. I've got a couple of suggestions in what you've got here, David. And then we'll just look at it here and others may have special things they want to do. Let's see here. On Page 2 of your memo here, your draft, it says, in red there, number 4 at the top, it says, "Outdoor storage shall not be located with any, within any required setback area and shall be in asphalt or concrete service." Shouldn't that be an on? Read better, mark clear, okay? And then, down in the little table you have there, you have the captions of the columns. First one is use, then CC, and then CG. That CG should be GC, general commercial. So, what do you fellow planning commissioners have to say about? So, what, what do you fellow planning commissioners have to say about it?
Like, just to point out a couple things, if I could, please. First of all, this, the, the living area would be under special land use, which means it has to come before this body be approved in special situations. It's not general overall in the, in these zoning districts, as currently exist. Secondly, in the, at the last meeting, there was a tentative development exhibit. It was a part of the packet that was provided by the developer, and it shows that he's well away from the creek and any pavement driveway, anything way to the, to the south of that. And also that the building has a setback, and I'm not sure what that southern setback would be. That seems to be the one question. So that would be something, a site plan would come before this body to be approved in the first place. Because nothing happens until the site plan's approved. So, a couple things there that I, I wanted to point out that I think are useful to know. And also, if, if somebody built a house on here and had parties all night long, it'd be noisy too. So, but with this, this type of facility, the whole backside of it is not proposed to have any windows or doors or anything, correct? Or the, the excess egress door, I guess. Don't have the, the same thing, you would have a house there, it had four sides to it, and be wide open, and they'd party all night, the same thing. Plus, the existing residential is, is adjacent to a commercial area now. So that, this is just one more piece that fits in with the general commercial area.
Can I follow up on both of your comments?
Sure.
First, both of you mentioned special land use, and I think that's important to make clear. If we were adding these uses as a, as permitted uses, and a site plan came in and it met zoning requirements, it would have to be approved. With the special land use, the planning commission has a broader discretionary review authority to approve or deny, or to approve with, with conditions to address neighboring concerns. So, as a special land use, a, a proposal could meet all zoning requirements and be denied if it was not in the right location, or if it, if it was determined to have a significant impact on neighboring property. Or you could apply significant conditions of approval. So I just wanna make that clear, that you do have a much more authority as, with these special land uses as proposed. Concerning a six-foot fence or additional screening, that could certainly be applied during your special land use review. You could also just require that where a budding residential property, so that might be a topic of discussion as well. And then just a one follow-up to Mr. Camp's comment about the twenty-five foot setbacks. That may be better, that could be better applied if you, if you simply said, where a budding residential property, the setback shall be no less than twenty-five feet. So that would address the, the issue of, of squeezing from both sides, twenty-five foot setbacks, where on one side you could be adjacent to a commercial property where that twenty-five foot setback is not as important. But as somewhat of a compromise, as was suggested, and to, to ensure that, that, what I said would, would address neighboring concerns, have the twenty-five foot setback only where a budding residential's own property.
Item three that we're adding here, side and rear setbacks at least twenty-five feet, one adjacent to a residential property?
Budding. And then that would be the same for self-storage facility T six, you could add a six there.
Wanna see it again before we approve it, or are we, were there other thoughts here, folks?
The time is limited, I'd like to see it go ahead.
Constructive thoughts here about what we wanna do here? This is a team project. Everyone, Mr. Chair, is everyone comfortable with the parking requirements? T one. One parking space is required for twenty storage units, and you suggested, Dave, we could just eliminate that sentence.
That's, that's correct, because, oh, I'm sorry.
But because then the next sentence, which would still be there, parking may be reduced or deferred if the applicant demonstrates that it's not necessary based on anticipated use. But somebody who reads that and says parking may be reduced, and you're gonna say, reduced from what? I mean, what's?
There could be reference to the, the parking table. So that would be section six forty E. So you could say parking required by section six forty E may be reduced or deferred. And, and just to clarify, the parking requirement in six forty E is actually stricter than what I had suggested. So it's a six spaces plus one per unit. So even more of a reason to have the, the reduction.
Action if appropriate to recommend a city council to amend, not amend, the city code, chapter one five four zoning, to amend section two point two zero to include the definitions of personal and commercial storage suites and self-storage facility, to amend section four point eight zero to include special land use specific standards for personal and commercial storage suites and self-storage facilities, to amend section nine point one one zero to allow accessory dwelling units, personal and commercial storage suites and self-storage facilities as special land uses in the general commercial zoning district, and to amend section nine point one two zero to allow self-storage facilities and personal and commercial storage suites as special land uses in the light industrial, L one, L I one zoning districts. Second, with the changes of parking and the twenty-five foot setback, a budding residential?
Please.
Yeah.
See, I'll go in order of, of the suggestions. Number one was changing the statement to outdoor storage shall not be located within any required setback area and shall be on a asphalt or concrete surface, as suggested by the chairman. Number two, the use table on page two, C G will be changed to G C. Number three, then, we would add S three and T six under section two, which would read where a budding residential's own property setbacks shall be no less than twenty-five feet. And then last, under section two, T one, to strike sentence one and to revise sentence two to state, parking required by section six forty E may be reduced or deferred if the applicant demonstrates that it's not necessary based on anticipated use. I, I don't think we would need, it would just be any property line that's, that's residential zoned. So it, it would be side or rear, front, you would never have a front property line that would be a budding residential, because it would be right-of-way or, or an easement.
One thing that I caught in your first sentence, you, you said amend and not to amend.
Oh, I'm sorry, to amend. A lot of pressure up here.
So are we ready to call the issue? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, we've approved it. Thank you. All right. We're down to agenda item number twelve. Discussion and to take action if appropriate to schedule a public hearing to amend city code, chapter one five four zoning, to add section three point three seven oh, outdoor service and dining. And this was motivated by Mr. Newson's request. And David has prepared some language. And David, do you wanna go through that with us, for us?
Received a, a request to amend the zoning ordinance to acknowledge and authorize outdoor service and dining. So I prepared draft language that would fall under a new section three point three seven zero titled outdoor service and dining. So what this would do is authorize outdoor service for any restaurant, bar, lounge, or pub within the zoning districts that allow those uses. Those, those are all uses that are specifically authorized in, in the general commercial and, and core commercial zoning districts. Review and approval, so there, there's a process for for a special land use approval for, for the, the bar or lounge or pub uses. And then if it's just for a, something that's allowable for a permitted allowable, existing use, that could be approved by the zoning administrator. There are plan requirements, so everything we wanna see for the outdoor service area, we have listed here on, on, really wanna see like a plot plan or a sketch plan that would show all these required elements, like where things are gonna be placed, the, the five-foot clear area for walking, number of tables, the arrangements, and so on. Other requirement, information, we wanna see the total proposed capacity, the lighting plan, any lighting pictures that'd be used if there's service asked after dusk. There's location requirements suggested, so that it should be immediately adjacent to the establishment in which it's associated with. Setbacks, so the E one is suggested as, as the setback shall be the same as the setback that's applicable to the principal building itself. So that there wouldn't be any special setbacks for, for any of these districts, except under E two, we say that in, in the core commercial zoning district, where the cafe is located, you could have a, a reduced setback, and it may, patio may encroach into a required front setback area. But a minimum of a five-foot setback shall be maintained from the public right-of-way. So I think that the main purpose of this is that they, they couldn't put that area in front of the, the building because the building is, is about ten feet from the right-of-way. So that's, and the setback is, is greater. So now, a- after walking the site today, I feel that maybe the set, because we only have ten feet there, we should probably make that five feet less, maybe down to zero even, just as long as it doesn't encroach onto the public right-of-way. I think that would be, might be something to consider. They only have ten feet. If we have a five-foot setback, that'd be not much room for, for a table and chairs. So you, you could leave a foot or two, or just waive the setback altogether possibly. There's clear walkway requirements, so most zoning ordinances that allow this, and wanna ensure that there's a five-foot walking area between tables and, and to get in and out of the restaurant. Tables and chairs, they should be of, of quality constructed metal wood or, or something of comparable quality so that we don't have plastic chairs blowing around in, in severe weather. Umbrellas, they should be secured so that we don't, there are no wind cause hazards, and they should be closed after hours of operation. Lighting, so lighting is required if it's open after dusk, and there's requirements so that the, the lighting does not affect adjacent properties or, or anyone driving or walking in the public right-of-way. Capacity, I suggested that the outdoor service and dining areas shall not exceed fifty percent of the total indoor service and dining area, unless a greater square footage is approved through the special land use process. So the idea here is that the outdoor area is accessory to the indoor dining facility. So a, a lot of ordinances I reviewed have, have ranges anywhere from twenty-five to fifty percent. So I, I just put in fifty percent as a placeholder here. You could reduce that and then allow for an increase through special land use or, or keep it at fifty. Noise, so amplified music shall be regulated so it does not impact nearby residential property. Amplified music is prohibited between ten P M. and nine A M. So again, these, this is, this is a model, this is model language for you to consider. Any of these can be adjusted up or down a, as you see fit. Outdoor cooking restriction, the requirements concerning refuse and litter and debris. And then alcoholic beverage service, they, they, that area does need to be enclosed by a barrier. That is required by the liquor control commission, but the barrier should be of a sufficient height and design to reasonably limit access to the designated ingress egress areas. And then they would need to demonstrate that they had all of their applicable license for the, the outdoor service of, of alcoholic beverages. Furniture storage, tables, chairs, and umbrellas not be outsore, stored outside during the off-season. And lastly, fire department approval. All areas are subject to fire code compliance and approval by a fire department. So this is a pretty comprehensive regulatory framework for outdoor dining. I think we cover really everything that's in any ordinance that I've reviewed. And again, you could adjust things up and down. I think the one that I noticed again was, was the, the setback in the setback reduction allowance in core commercial, you may want to drop that lower than five feet. So that'd be similar to, to a Main Street-type community where in some cases, you, cities will allow for outdoor dining on public sidewalks if they're wider. That's not what we're allowing for here, but I don't think it would be unreasonable to allow tables and chairs up to the right-of-way. But if you're uncomfortable with that, you could have a, a minimum setback as well.
We can take it to zero, can't we?
I, I would have no concerns with that if it was dropped to zero. And that'd only be for core commercial in, in the front, so.
How would that sentence be revised there?
Now, witnessing this requirement in the setback encroachment provisions of section three sixty, outdoor dining areas within the core commercial zoning district may encroach into the required setback area with no minimum setback. No minimum front setback.
Question, is the Alamo legal? Outdoor dining? Their tables and chairs aren't, not gonna move anywhere with a picky table, I know that. They're gonna blow away, but... Just curious, you know. We're not going to shut them down, don't worry.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I can see where this works really well for, not only for Pine Street, but also for the proposed brewery.
With that change, I've got a couple little suggestions here. First of all, in Item C on the first page, Item C1, you have a list of items there. One thing you don't have there is anything about fencing. That is, what kind of little fence should there be? I think this applicant is proposing a three-foot fence, but should we say something about that? Someone might put a six-foot fence there? Or something that's opaque, I mean, do we need to say anything about the fence?
Chair?
Yes.
David, with the Michigan Liquor Control Commission, what kind of fencing are they calling out since we don't specify?
I did read the requirement and it's pretty vague. I think it just needs to be something that delineates the area, but not necessarily something that you couldn't step over. So I think local requirements are typically stricter than what the state would require. Yes, I think if that's not under C1, it should be maybe it could be a location of under C1F, we could just add barriers there. And then under C2, we could add in C2D, description and specifications of barrier, of proposed barrier. So we would want to see the line on the site plan where it's going to be located. But then we'd also want to get a sheet showing, you know, a picture of the type of fence or barrier that they would use or specification sheet.
Okay, and then going further down, under lighting, just a little editorial. Last line under Item J, which is lighting, last sentence. Light fixtures shall only illuminate, I think that second only should be deleted, the service and dining area. Makes better? And then down, further down near the bottom of the page, under letter O, Item 1. Second line there has a sentence that begins, "The barrier shall be a sufficient height," maybe be of sufficient height and design. Read better? Thank you. I think we've done your work for you. So what are your thoughts, colleagues? Should we give David the assignment to put this together and go to a public hearing? Yes?
One thing, I'm a little worried about amplified music at 10 o'clock at night for residents. Do we want to allow that or look at a level that we can require? I don't know. The other thing I'm wondering is, when you're talking about barriers, now there's social districting everywhere. I can see people wanting to go from there to the brewery when it's completed. So do we want to start looking at social district laws as well?
A lot of that traffic will be from the marina, they'll be back.
Yeah, but I just wonder if we want to, if you're talking about barriers, you're not going to need barriers if people can walk from here to there with their drink, so.
Mr. Knudsen is only proposing dining at night now from Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday till seven o'clock. That's his latest plan, so it hasn't been open before then. I don't know where the music would come from. It used to be the sandbox there. So do we want to do anything about noise and modify that in any way or leave at 10:00 PM? Regina's concerned about that. If it's not open, we don't have to worry about it. Again, this is a general ordinance, so this would apply to the No Wake Brewery and anyone else who wants to do this. Your would want to know what can I and can I do? Might affect whether they would want to even do this, you know? If this is passed, you can always come back and modify it too. We do that, but this is strictly to get a public hearing in the first place. We'll just leave this alone right now, Roger. So David, do you hear what we're doing here? And Craig, I think let's put this on the next meeting.
Got a motion, please?
Second?
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded that we have a public hearing to amend City Code, Chapter 154 zoning to add Section 3.370 Outdoor Service and Dining at our next planning and commission meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Passed it? Okay, Agenda Item 13. Public hearing to consider a special land use and for site plan approval for a church on parcel number 70030930059, commonly known as 17685174th Avenue, Leping's Food Centers. Is the, is someone, is a pastor from the church here like to share with all of us what's up?
Thank you for your time and consideration. My name is Dan Turner and I'm the pastor of Tov Community Church. And it's Tov, T-O-V, which is actually the word good in Hebrew. And it goes all the way back to Genesis where God actually spoke something into existence and then looked back and said, "Good." And so Tov Community Church is what we, what our name is because we want to be known as good in the community. And so being a pastor, I promise I won't hit you with a sermon, but basically, basically what we want to do is be in the community to share God's love with the community and partner with the community hopefully for God's glory and for the help of people. And so there's 30 of us currently. I did actually stand before the Spring Lake Township Planning and Zoning Commission and they asked me questions that that property ended up, that we were pursuing, ended up not being able to move forward on based not on Spring Lake Township, but on, on actually the folks that we were going to rent from, lease from. But they said, "How many people will come?" And I said, "Well, hopefully 31," because there's 30 of us now. And so we have no idea exactly what, where this will go, but I will say we want to be in the community. We have chosen this particular spot so that we are very accessible to the community and hopefully, hopefully can be really good in the community, Tov, in the community. And I did put in some narrative in the app, in the application, just we basically want to follow the lease first of all, but we also, that we have the agreement that we have with the Lepings, with LCL. But also, we want to be as compliant as possible, whatever, whatever the Ferrisburg needs for us to be good neighbors. That's what we want to do. No, sir, no, sir. We did paint the walls that were purple and green from the curves, but that's, that's pretty much all we're doing yet, no additional, nothing added up. No, sir, I'm not asking for the hardware space at this point, although in conversations with, with Mr. Lepink and Mr. Cole, it's possible that if more than 31 people show up, that we may, we may work through that. And, and I did, that's actually a question that I had for, for the city manager. If we decide to move a couple doors down, do we need to do this process again? And I don't need an answer right this, right this second, but it would be good for.
But if you put a church and a hardware back in there, would it?
You know, actually, actually, I'm a man's man, so that might work. Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Hi, Jim Bremer again. This church is going to be right across my house, which is fine. But I guess my first question is, is this was built, Leping Council was built under, I believe it was a PUD for special tax purposes and whatnot when it was originally built. You say you want a better tax base, now if you let a church go in there, then they don't have to pay taxes. So does Leping still have to pay tax on the building? That's one question.
Yes, they would.
They would still pay taxes, okay, so you're not losing that. Alright, I guess that's, that was probably one of the bigger things.
That's a good point, yes. Thank you for bringing it up.
Well, that's, well, like I said, we're looking for tax money here apparently, so we want to make sure that we get it all in. But yeah, that's what I was wondering, I just found out now where it's going in because we had no idea. I came down to City Hall and they said that I could make an appointment and find out what was going on there, which I didn't do. And then they said I'd go home and find it on the computer, but I'm not smart enough to find it on the computer, so. I just, that's why I sat here to learn where it's going in. Church is fine as long as they go by the same timetable and then at Leping's does. Cars, nothing after 10 o'clock and, or whatever the time is at Leping's now. And that was all put in originally, everything in there was supposed to follow Leping's. They don't do that anymore because the car wash stays open 24/7, laundromat stays open. And we have people there all night who they have to drive up bank, put in out there in the summertime. You hear cars out there, the radio blasting and everything, they're drawing money out of the bank, 2, 3 in the morning. So I said, I don't know what type of church this is, but hopefully they don't play a lot of loud music or that kind of stuff. Hopefully that can have some kind of ground rules for what goes, or what time this stuff goes down around there too.
Coming to the microphone, I'm going to close this public hearing at 8:43. And let's move on to Agenda Item 4. Discussion and to take action if appropriate to recommend the city council to approve, not approve, a special land use and for site plan approval for a church on parcel number 70030930059, commonly known as 17685174th Avenue, Leping's Food Center. I think David had some, there are certain criteria we have to go by and David has some thoughts as he looked at it. David, would you like to share that with us?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is a situation where it's just a change of use of a unit within a multi-tenant building. So there's no site plan associated with it, it's just the existing conditions of the site that won't be changed. The main thing we look at when we have change of use is Section 628, which is concerning a change of use and parking. So the requirement for place of worship is, is one parking space per three seats, so for three people. So with the current congregation of 30 people, they do need 10 parking spaces. The survey that they showed, I believe they've been allocated 40 spaces, so they could conceivably grow four times. So that, they have more than enough parking for future growth. If they did exceed, if they exceeded that, that amount, they would need to expand or find additional parking from the, from the landowner. Also, special land use review, I included findings against each of the standards of approval that you need to consider prior to approval. I don't think this would have any more significant impact than any other standard commercial use within that building. So I'd recommend approval.
And I think as a matter of responsibility, I should brood through what you have here, so, for the review standards. So special land use review, prior to approving a special land use application, the following general standards, in addition to any specific requirements for use, shall be satisfied. Proposed use or activity shall, number one, be compatible and in accordance with the City of Ferrisburg Master Plan. And this meets the standard, the master plan anticipates a variety of non-residential uses within the commercial future land use designation. The general commercial zoning district corresponds to this designation and implements the plan. Number two, be designed, constructed, operated, and maintained so as to be compatible with the existing or intended character of the general vicinity and so as not to change the essential character of the area in which it is proposed. And our consultant's analysis says this meets the standard. There will be no exterior change to the structure or site. The character of the area includes a mix of commercial businesses and the place of worship is not anticipating to impact the character of the area. Number three, be adequately served by public facilities and services such as streets, police, and fire protection, drainage structures, water and sewage facilities, recreation facilities, and primary and secondary schools. Analysis says that this meets the standard. Activity is anticipated in this area. However, the hours of operation will be limited, have less impact than other allowable commercial activities. Number four, not include uses, activities, processes, materials, and equipment or conditions of operation that will be detrimental to the natural environment, public health, safety, or welfare due to excessive production of traffic, noise, smoke, odors, or other nuisance. And Mr. Gerosik's analysis says this meets the standard. Excessive impacts associated with the use are not anticipated. Traffic will be noticeable around the service hours, but the overall impact will be negligible. And criterion number five, promote the public interest through provision of a service, facility, or use determined to be beneficial to the residents of the city. And Mr. Gerosik's analysis says this meets the standard. This area has been identified for a variety of office and service land uses. The proposal is consistent with the vision for the area. Conclusion, I recommend approval of the special land use application with condition that all applicable city departments approve the change of use. So what is your thoughts here?
Two thoughts I had, number one, this is us, this goes back to special land use that we talked about before, earlier conversations about zoning. This is general commercial, if somebody were to put a hardware store in there, it wouldn't have, it doesn't qualify, it doesn't qualify as a special land use, you could do that. The church, schools, a couple of things fall under special land use, therefore they have to come before this body before they're approved. So that's the process here. And I was kind of joking with Mr. Turner about a church and a hardware store. I'm not sure if that's a approved special.
I'm not sure if that's a approved special land use or not, but I certainly think it should be. But anyway, a hardware store, used salon, they would, they'd be fine in there because it all falls under the original site plan, which was a PUD, by the way, too. So anyway, a church being a special, a special land use for this property has to come before us. And that's why Mr. Turner's here to, to advise us on the questions that we might have on the property, so. Anyone else like to share the thought?
Special land use and for site plan approval for the church on the parcel seventy oh five oh nine three hundred oh fifty-nine, commonly known as one seven six eight five, one seventy-fourth Avenue, Lepink's Food Centers. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Yes, congratulations, Pastor Turner. I hope your flock does grow. Item number fifteen. Item number fifteen, discussion and to take action if appropriate to approve or not approve a request for a curb cut for a driveway at one seven oh five nine West Spring Lake Road. And the property owner there has presented the case here, including lots of pictures that are very helpful. It's even more helpful to just drive by and take a look at it, and you can see the argument that he's making. I can't help but notice that his current driveway looks like it's a dirt driveway. And he says in here, he's going to put in a concrete driveway, which would meet the code, current code. So that would be an improvement. So what do you think, folks?
I live right by there, so I'm basically your neighbor. But, yeah, I, I've actually driven into this driveway before they owned the property, and it was, if anyone is riding you on West Spring Lake Road, a quick cut over is a little scary. So, yeah, there definitely needs to be something, I believe, done with that driveway. And I was trying to think of other ways that they could do it, and I really couldn't come up with anything.
Anyone else want to share a thought? Yeah, we have a lot of driveways in this city that are dangerous or back out driveways into our main arteries. Forest Street's a good example. Also, Pine Street, West Spring Lake Road. If you go along, there's a lot of places, so turnarounds are much, definitely better. In this case, interestingly enough, last summer, I almost got in an accident. This intersection, when I, I was going east on West Spring Lake Road, and somebody was coming off one hundred and sixty-eight to make a left-hand turn. And he, he wasn't impaired by that lack of line of sight, he just wasn't paying attention. And, and I could see, and I took my foot off the gas, and I could see him kind of inching out, looking around like he was lost. And sure enough, he pulled right in front of me while I hit the brakes just in time, so all I gave him was a little tap. And not even a mark on my car or his car, but, but it's a, you have to be careful no matter what street you're on, and most people aren't, and that's a problem. But so, if you can eliminate one hazard on this piece of property of the backing out in that intersection, I think it's a plus. Our consultant, Mr. Derosick, has prepared a little one of these here. Do you want to comment?
Mr. Chairman, this is a, really just something that we refer to the planning commission just to get a couple extra sets of eyes on it and to have you drive that intersection to see if there would be any concerns with, with the driveway, specifically as it relates to if there was a car parked in the, in the proposed area, in terms of site visibility. So this is not any sort of, it's not a driveway deviation of any sort. U-shaped driveways are permitted if they have a hundred feet of street frontage and on corner lots. So it's something that is allowable per the zoning ordinance, but the zoning ordinance does allow us to forward this to the planning commission for final approval. And just because we had, we had some concern with it, we wanted to have extra set of eyes on it.
Planning commission members inspect the intersection and assess visibility. Sounds like most of us have done that. So, thank you. So, what's your pleasure here? And I think this is a final decision, we're not recommending to city council anything here. Should we pass motion here to say we recommend this, approve it? I recommend approval. One suggestion I would have is that the owner look at the, the, where the second driveway would come out. It's possible to go a little bit further away from the intersection. I'm not sure you can make a curve there, but can I take that as a suggestion? Otherwise, I'm moved. Elder, please say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions? Okay, we passed it. And then we tabled item sixteen, fill permit. So we're making good progress through a very long agenda tonight. Okay. We're down then to what was originally, number seventeen, presentation applicants for appointment to the planning commission. And there are six people, David Cook, Stanley Stern, Jake Stierle, Joe Lyons, Sandy Tuggle, Jordan Weber. And Mr. Stierle sent us a memo that he asked to be read. And for those who don't know the story, when there was an opening, when Roger decided to step down, we looked at applicants and recommended Mr. Stierle. And the way it works is that we make a motion, a recommendation to the mayor and the city council or who is on this body, but it really is up to the mayor to bring it to city council for a vote. City council does need to vote, but the mayor is in between step, and that hasn't happened yet. And so Mr. Stierle asked that I read something into the minutes here, because he wasn't able to be here tonight. Yours is comments. "I will not be attending the Fairiesburg Planning Commission meeting tonight. I appeared in front of the Fairiesburg Planning Commission approximately one year ago to present my application and answer questions, and nothing on my end has changed since then. At that time, the planning commission recommended me unanimously for appointment to the commission, but Mayor Scott Bleeze has repeatedly refused to appoint me. In the process, he and the mayor pro temp, Tim O'Donnell, have unjustly called me biased and unqualified in the public domain. I ask that the planning commission not recommend anyone else for appointment until Mayor Scott Bleeze adheres to your recommendation and gives me an opportunity to be voted on by city council for appointment to the Fairiesburg Planning Commission. Mayor Bleeze's refusal to act on the planning commission's recommendation is disrespectful to volunteers serving on the planning commission and undermines the functionality of city government." Jake Stierle, thank you. So it's in the record. And let me ask, is Mr. Cook here?
Mr. Chairman, first, I would like to move that we consider Jake Stierle's application first and foremost. We've already made a decision. We have, I've never, in all the years I've been involved in politics here, seen a mayor totally disregard the planning commission. It is disrespectful to us, it's disrespectful to Mr. Stierle. I see, he never even got a chance to be voted on. Repeatedly, the council, majority council said, no, we're not going to go with Scott Bleeze's appointments. And I think that's wrong. Mr. Stierle is a qualified city leader, he has a BS in public affairs from IU, he has a MBA in marketing from Indiana University. And I don't think we, this procedural variations and abnormalities that have been going on in the past year and a half are really making people not want to volunteer. Who wants to volunteer when they tell the paper that you're unqualified and biased? Council should have the opportunity to vote on Jake Stierle, and I'm going to move that he be our first recommended candidate. I made a motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. No, not at the moment. But you're on the list here, Joe.
Of order, he didn't identify himself, we have something on the table to vote on.
I'm, I'm going to go with the meeting as we are right now, Joe, you'll have a chance to speak, though. There's something, there's a motion on, on the table here. I haven't heard a second to that motion. Oh, I'm sorry, there is a second. Now, before we do any voting here, there are two people who are up for renewal, who are sitting here right now on the planning commission. One is sitting here, Jordan is sitting here, and Sandy is absent from the meeting. Don't know what, what is your motion entail?
That we appoint Jake, Jake Stierle as our first representative nomination. That's what we decided a year ago. And we keep getting this shoved back at us. It was even suggested by former Mayor Hop that Bleeze appoint himself. Now that would really bring us together as a city, wouldn't it? Isn't it time that procedure be followed? I am sick of sitting here, and are we the patsies of these people? We have an important role in this city, and we need to abide by it, and they need to listen to us. At least give the man a chance to be voted on.
Just to clarify on the motion, for term ending, there's two terms ending in twenty twenty-six and one term ending in twenty twenty-five.
Because you're including Rogers.
That's correct. You know what, the term, recommendation for what term you're, you're recommending for? Okay.
So which, which one are you nominating?
So it'd be for term ending twenty twenty-five.
What did he apply for to begin with?
For term ending twenty twenty-five.
All right, then, then let's do that one, that's how I move.
I agree with Regina, I think Jake should at least get a chance on a vote.
Commissioner Schulberg? Mr. Weber? Sorry?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Hawley?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Jonas?
Yes.
Chairman Riffel?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right, well, I'll entertain what you have. All right, let's, let's hear what you have to say.
For the record and for the folks that are here in interest of this, of this hearing this evening, title number three of the Fairiesburg Charter, section number four one three, states as follows. Unless the city council shall by unanimous vote, which vote shall be recorded as part of its official proceedings, determine that the best interest of the city shall be served, the following relatives of any elective or appointive officer are disqualified from holding any appointive office or employment during the term for which the elective or appointive office was elected or appointed, spouse, child, parent, grandchild, grandparent, brother, sister, half-brother, half-sister, or the spouses of any of them. All relationships shall include those arising from adoption. This section shall in no way disqualify such relatives or their spouses who are bona fide appointive offices or employees of the city at the time of the election of any elective official. I think there was an item in front of the council this past Monday regarding a grandson of one of the employees, and he was required to be hired for summer work as a, by a, by a unanimous vote of the council. Mr. Stierle, I understand his, his interest and perhaps his qualifications, but his wife is the chair of the recreation, of the recreation committee, and as such, he is not qualified to stand before this council or before, before the council and/or this, or this committee as a bona fide recipient of this honor. I thank you.
Well, then we'll just have to see what the council says, won't we? Yes, it is, it says, unless the city council chooses otherwise. Read it. Unless the city council shall by unanimous vote, which vote shall be recorded as part of its official proceedings. Got it, Joe? Let's do.
During the meeting that Mr. Stierle, is this funny? No, I'm not, ma'am. I was approved by the, by the chair to speak. Would you prefer I sat down, John? Would you prefer I sat down, John? Thank you. Thank you. During the meeting where Mr. Sterling was approved by this, by this committee, there was an agenda that was written that required notification of the, of the city management by April 25, 2022. Mr. Sterling's request was dated by the city May 2. And, and he was not listed on the agenda. And yet he was added to the agenda and voted to be the recommendation of this committee. Mrs. Silberg, it is a violation of the Open Meetings Act for you to be, for you to be on your electronic equipment.
I'm sorry, my, my, people up here are aware of my husband's health condition and I will be on it. And if you want to sue me for that, go right ahead.
Well, we'll talk about that later.
And as far as your statement that Jake's application was late, I verified it through Craig that it was not. And there is written proof of that. You keep harping on that and it is a lie.
There are, there are mistakes made at the office. Thank you very much.
I would like to hand Mr. Cook, if he's here, talk about this case here.
Good evening. My name is Dave Cook. I've never approached this body before. I am not related to or married to anybody currently employed or serving in public office. I am a candidate for city council. I will be running in the November election. I was raised in Ferrisburg. My family has lived in South Palaty Hills for approximately 40 years. I was educated in this building, this very classroom. And my interest in the board, there was a comment made at a commission meeting some time ago related to whether or not anyone would want to serve in the planning commission. And I thought, I have nothing to lose. I might as well put my name in. As far as my qualifications are concerned, I have a bachelor's degree in earth science. I have a master's degree in geography and water resources. And I have an MBA. I have worked for a local development commission and authority in the states of Wyoming as well as upstate New York. I have obtained and have worked in the industry of geographic information systems, which is used for land use planning and cadastro mapping for several years. And I have a 15-year work employment history in the public sector, including Ottawa County and government organizations in the state of Wyoming and the state of New York. I would be happy to answer any questions you have on my application. If there are none, I thank you for your consideration.
Just a thought, you're an applicant for city council, is that right?
That's correct, sir.
If you, um, are elected to city council, city council appoints someone to this body. As Mr. Carlson here is the current appointee from city council. And you're running for mayor, so you can't be a commissioner, is that right? They may do that. So you're going to be mayor or, uh, I'm sorry.
Or city council person.
So you're running for city council?
No, I have two more years left.
Two more years, okay, all right. Okay, so then you would drop out from city council?
And serve as mayor.
And serve as mayor.
This is, this is about Mr. Cook, though.
It is. It absolutely is. I would just point out, if you were appointed to this body and you won the election to the city council, you may not be on this body very long. So depends on what the city council does. Anyone else have questions?
I'd like to point out, if you recommend me, if the mayor appoints me, council appoints me, if I get elected, those are a lot of ifs. I would like to serve in this board. My first application was to this planning commission. I don't know the history behind all the other applicants or when they applied. I will tell you from my recollection, I submitted my application last year in 2022. I didn't consider running for council at that point. Honestly, I didn't hear anything back from this body. So I thought, it's a done deal. I might as well run for council. I would be happy to serve for whatever time you would have me. That being said, I do understand if I were to get elected, I would have to choose one or the other. I'm not, I'm not prepared to make the decision here.
You have served on any other boards or commissions in Ferrisburg?
I have not. I've only lived in Ferrisburg as an adult for a year and a half. I will tell you, I was employed by the city of Ferrisburg as a miner. I worked on the city's lawn care group for a summer.
Daughters are educated in this room also.
It has good memories. Thank you for consideration.
Stanley Stern, is Stanley here? Mr. Stern? Sturk, I apologize. Yes.
My name is Stan Sturk. I moved here in December. I have been active in local politics. I was on the Georgetown Township, Charter Township Board for 16 years. Involved building the fire barn, three fire barns, the ice arena, township office. Also on the zoning board of appeals for, I think, six years before I was on the commission or a year while I was on the commission. I have a background, I have a bachelor's out of Hope College, a master's out of Western. I was in public accounting for 50 years, dealing primarily with contractors, quality and size contractors, CPA firm. Involved in home builders for 40 years. I'm very interested in helping the city of Ferrisburg continue to solve a problem properly, properly. And I am interested in public service. Public service, open not-for-profit area with home builders and associated builders and contractors. Like I said, I was on, I moved here. I got sick of getting flooded out on the Grand River in Genesee. After 30 years, I decided to get above the floodplains. I live in bites now. I know my basement's a foot above the 100-year floodplains. I had a study done. I'm happy to answer any questions about my background. Well, I'm also a CPA. And do have a builder's license.
Any questions?
You are a member of the Home Builders Association of Greater Grand Rapids, right?
Yes.
And that is, you're a legislative rep. That's like, represents the interest of home builders?
Yes, I have been on the state board of the Michigan Association of Home Builders over 40 years. On their taxation committee.
So I, I'm just wondering how you see your role in this, you know, political voice for home builders in relation to serving on our PC?
I think that brings additional benefits to the organization. Builder's voice of doing things properly. Here that wants to be sown four acres. I also have been in Landville and residential construction, done a few different.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Joe Lyons, 16857 Virginia Avenue in Ferrisburg. I've been in front of this committee before. And I appreciate the work that you folks put into it. I think there needs to be some, some detail to the responsibilities and the work and perhaps the attitude of some of the members. I'm going to bring to your attention something that I found quite disturbing. As I mentioned previously, I was in front of this committee back in May of 2022 and was the only person on the agenda. That seemed to have been passed over regardless of what Open Meetings Act requirements are for business conducted by a city. But then I found this information that was stated on a, on the worldwide web by Mrs. Silberg. This goes back, I presume, back into May, June.
Mr. Chairman, are you going to let him sit here and slander me?
When, there's no slander here, my dear.
Oh, my dear. Yes, there is. I'm not going to allow you to do this. I have, my lawyer has told me I need a PPO against you from the things that you have posted, the time that you grabbed me at city hall. We really need to stop this, Joe. I'm not going to sit here and let you attack me.
Regina, you know that you're stating this information. You absolutely know.
Point of order.
Joe, yes.
Point of order. Mr. Chair, this is not germane at all to what we're discussing.
Yes, it is germane.
Well, I don't think it is. We want to consider your application.
But just a moment. How can, how can you, how can you possibly consider an application when you have members on your board that state things?
Mr. Chair, point of order. Point of order! Joe, shut up! That's enough.
Be careful, he'll come at you.
Point of order.
Guys, this is a, this is a Ferrisburg Planning Commission meeting. Let's just remember that.
Point of order.
Don't I have, don't I have a First Amendment right?
We do not have the right to slander me.
To what we're discussing.
Would you like to see the post I have where you told someone you will never stop attacking me on Facebook? Never in capital letters.
Take it up in court.
All right, look, we're not going to go on this. You were here to entertain your application.
I'm not entertaining, I'm not trying to entertain this council. I'm trying to, I'm trying to let the public of this community know that there are people who would go so far as saying, when he applied to the PC,
Joe, this isn't the form to do that.
I told the chair of the committee, I would need an escort out of the meetings if he was appointed.
I did. And I also asked Richard to escort me to my car tonight.
Are you carrying, honey?
Joe, I think we can't do that. If you want to write a letter to the editor to make a public.
Mrs. Silberg, I will be filing a complaint against you that will be, that will be forwarded to the Attorney General of Michigan.
Go right ahead.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead. Like you were going to sue us before, right? And you told Tim Scarpino you were going to sue him. Go for it, Joe.
I never told Tim I would sue him. And I never told you I would sue you.
You know, I apologize for Mr. Lyons bringing this crap to this body. We are not collateral damage to his hatred of me. Disgraced, recalled city councilman.
Okay, that's, that's it. Okay, thank you, Joe.
I guess, I guess she's made my point.
Okay, let's, let's also note, Jordan, you are on the commission and you are applying for reappointment. And you've filled out the form. Is there anything you'd like to share with us here?
Yeah, so I, sorry, my heart's racing a little bit. Yeah, I've served on this board for a year and a half. I've really enjoyed working with you all. I feel like tonight we really, you know, united as a group. I am currently enrolled in the citizen planner training. I'm really excited to learn. I'm a lifelong resident of the city, but I'm also a lifelong learner. Yeah, don't, don't let my age define me. I think I hopefully bring a unique perspective to this group. I'm a young mom. And yeah, I just want to continue to promote growth and development for the city. So yes, I would love to continue serving.
Chairman, I'd like to recommend the city council that Sandy Tuggle and Jordan Weber be reappointed to city to the planning commission for terms ending in 26, right? I'm not going to recognize that motion because I think we should just look at Sandy's thing first. Then we'll talk about it. She's not here. She's not here, but we should look at what she's. Give it to us. So you also received Sandy's, before we do any voting on anyone, hopefully everyone's read what Sandy wrote. She had a business commitment tonight that precluded her being here. She was excused from the meeting. Any thoughts about what she wrote here? All right, I'm not hearing any. So, um, right, right now, folks, we, we made a recommendation for Mr. Sterling to be reappointed for a term that ends in 25, is that right? Be appointed to 25. And so if you're going to make a motion, Roger, why don't we put it in the years that we're going for here? I did say 26. You get both terms in 26 for your term? Yes, I, I, I move that we recommend the city council the reappointment of Sandy Tuggle and Jordan Weber to the planning commission for terms ending 6/30/26. A second? Is there any discussion about this? Okay, let's, let's have a vote then. All in favor of recommending the city council a reappointment of Sandy Tuggle and Jordan Weber for appointments at the end in 26? Let's have a roll call vote on this. Commissioner Weber?
Abstain? Oh, oh, can I? Okay, then, yes. Okay, yes.
Commissioner Hawley?
Yes.
Commissioner Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Jonas?
Yes.
Mr. Shilberg?
Yes.
Chairman Riffle?
Yes.
Motion passed. We did. Okay, congratulations, colleagues. Relative to Mr. Cook and Mr. Stern, Stern, I'm sorry. Apologize. There are times on the planning commission over the years, and I've had the opportunity to serve for some time here, where we are pressed to get good candidates to serve. And we sometimes struggle to do that. And I just want to thank you for stepping up and, and volunteering. You really look like strong candidates and you would bring some positive things to this body. And so just want you to know, we really appreciate your, your attempting to, to be. Uh, and so just want you to know, we really appreciate your, your attempting to, to be, uh, um, uh, engaged here with us. Mr. Sturk, I saw on your application, uh, planning commission and/or alternate ZBA. Um, I think there is ZBA position open, alternate ZBA. Is that correct?
Correct, and he's on the agenda for next week.
Okay, all right, okay. So I think you'll probably find a position here. Um, and that's a good, good place to, to get your. It would be, uh, Thursday night at seven would be, uh, next week. Okay. But your, your application is in the hopper there? Okay, all right. Um, so we have made recommendations for all the positions that we have about, that are about to be opened or have been opened. Um, so we've done that. Um, and so we're down to agenda item eighteen, public comments. And again, um, we have opportunity for citizens to share any thoughts they would like to, uh, about any issue at this point that's left. So, yes.
Ms. Royce, one seven seven zero, Navajo. I, uh, think you made the right recommendation. I also agree with the other applicants minus Joe. I think Joe needs to stop bullying people. Been doing it for twenty-five years. And everything's been running great, so, um, all of you guys are volunteers and you do a good job. Your job is hard sometimes. Uh, I appreciate it. But each treated like lions. Thank you.
Hope you folks realize I have been a resident of this, uh, community for thirty-five years. I have served this community through various and assorted, uh, items that I provide to the, uh, to the community. Um, I find it disheartening that even though I bring to your attention things with regard to the charter of our, of our, uh, of our community, and also that, uh, I have previously brought, uh, to your attention the need for, um, handling the, um, the, uh, performance of , uh, committee meetings and/or council meetings to the, to the letter of the, uh, of the agenda. Those things are disheartening. We need to, we need to sharpen this up and I would hope you would agree with me. There's also, uh, a personal problem on this, uh, on this committee that needs to be addressed. Needs to be addressed by the city and/or in this case will be addressed by the, uh, state attorney general. So I would appreciate your, uh, uh, your looking at this deeply and, uh, you know, I am, I am kind of an old man. I've been around this community for a long time. And I'm going to say what I think is the truth, and it is the truth. We'll document it. Thank you very much.
Those public comments? Oh, yes.
I would like to compliment the board, particularly John, for excellent, well-run, level D. I think it was exemplary. And I think, John, you have done a beautiful job of handling, I appreciate all the work that all of you do. Thank you for considering it.
Look at applying at some other boards. We have a lot of board member, board memberships open and we could use a level-headed person with, you know, this is a nonpartisan city, a nonpartisan government here. We have everything from liberal liberals to conservative conservatives, so we, we need input. So look at some other board service.
Thank you.
All right, um, zoning administrators report?
No report.
Chairman's report?
No report.
Members' reports, comments?
Is the board member con, considered an officer of the city?
No.
So we already have, for instance, the Mineryks are related, they're spouses. Lisa Mineryk's on a, on the library board and Mr. Mineryk is on the brownfield, correct? Or he's on one of them?
He was, yes.
Yeah, okay, so, um, has that ever really been an issue? And we also don't know if Emily Sterling is going to continue on the recreation commission. She's been through, put through the ringer, so she may decide not to, not to pursue that. Um, sometimes I feel as though, you know, regardless of what we say, Mr. Belize is going to appoint, try to appoint whoever he wants. We have, um, a, a majority of council that are, I think, very level-headed and we may just have to wait till the next election to get what we need. But one thing I did, Roger said that really hit me was zoning doesn't define development, development defines zoning. And I think we need to keep that in mind, especially regarding green space. Because when you see, look at what's happening in Spring Lake Township. There is a big hella about development and zoning. And I think that really underscores the importance of our master plan. And so when are we going to be looking at our master plan again, uh, Craig, anytime soon?
Let's come up on this.
Okay, I think this, that whole, that statement pretty much underscores the importance of that.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for, for, um, having me back on the board. I'm really excited to, to work with you for the next three years. And, um, as I mentioned in my spiel, I have enrolled in the citizen planner training, so I'm looking forward, I know some of you have. Um, and I'm really excited to see what I learn, bring it back.
I, I do two things. Uh, just wanted to, to amplify a little bit what Regina touched on. The rezoning she's talking about in, in Spring Lake Township, north of Van Wagoner, the blueberry fields. There are about two hundred and forty acres that they want to rezone from, are, from, uh, Oh, I got nowhere on that one, so I suspect this new one coming up is going to be about the same argument. And what I worry about is those are all mushroom lots in there that is south of Van Wagoner, that are going to have to be the same north. Blueberry fields are planted where it's wet for a reason. And so they're going to bring lots of fill in there and these mushroom lots, what they did just off of, that's Spring Lake roads. Things are changing and that won't, that development probably will take fifteen or twenty years to, uh, to play out. We got, I don't see the demand for, for, uh, housing that much, uh, in that price range. Anyway, that was one thing. The other thing I wanted to, uh, I just wanted to note the passing of Mike, Commander Mike Smith, who meant so much to this community and, um, there are only three of us who have ever held a job of executive director of the Coast Guard Festival. Um, Mike was one, I was one, and Jerry Smith was one. So I had kind of a special, uh, special bond with Mike over the years and worked with him, worked with him since the last, actually, since nineteen ninety-five, when he started Dance, uh, you know, uh, Night of a Hundred Stars. I bet, way back in Grand Haven when he was stationed here as commander.
I just want to let you know, I, I did sign up for the citizens planner too, so I'm excited just to, yeah, start learning some more so I can talk more at these meetings. Yes, yes, through MSU. I do have a degree from MSU, but I will be doing some more classes.
Anything else? Okay, let's declare this meeting adjourned. It's been a long one.
All right.
Joe, can I talk to you after the meeting?